Okay. Thank you all for waiting patiently. So the good news is, the Select Board has a lot of goals for fiscal year 2026. The bad news is that made us go way over our originally planned schedule. But further good news is we're going to do what we would have done right now, which is the executive session after the open session. So we have a long night ahead of us, but we'll accelerate our timetable for you beyond what we've already cost you. With that in mind, please join the board in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, on the issue under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's meeting of the Plymouth Select Board is taking place in a hybrid format. Members of the board are joining us here in person at the Great Hall at Town Hall. Members of the board will not be joining us over the Zoom webinar platform, but members of the public or presenters may be. Members of the public who wish to participate in this meeting may do so by joining us here at the Great Hall at Town Hall, or they may do so by joining us over the Zoom webinar platform. Members of the public may join us over the Zoom webinar platform by joining us via the Zoom login information included on the agenda that is posted on the town website. Members of the public are also reminded that pursuant to Massachusetts general law, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of the Select Board after notifying the chair subject to reasonable requirements of the chair so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, the chair shall inform other attendees of any recordings. Presently, we are aware of recordings being made by the local scene for the cable broadcast and the YouTube broadcast and Zoom. So without further ado, that brings us into our agenda. We have first and foremost several licenses and permits listed. Wish of the board in regards to the listed licenses and permits.
Motion to approve one-day wine and malt licenses, amplified music permit, comprehensive entertainment permit, common victualler, change of officer liquor, and ever-source utility petition as a group.
So Mr. Golden has moved that we approve the listed licenses, permits, and associated items as a group. Do I have a second?
A second.
Ms. Iaquinto has seconded. Any discussion from members of the board as to whether or not to approve the licenses as a group?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Quinton?
I would like to take the common victualler juice bar separate.
Okay. If there's no objection, I will just remove that from the... Okay, there seems to be no objection, so we will take that one separately. The remaining ones being moved as a group by Mr. Golden and Ms. Iaquinto, any discussion on those? Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Kohan? Mr. Quintle?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Circling back to the common victualler, vila juice bar, or vela, however you actually pronounce that. Any... Do I have a motion, wish of the board? I don't think he wants to.
Motion to approve.
All right. Mr. Golden moves. Do I have a second?
A second.
You have a motion and we have a second in regards to the common victualler license? Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Kohan? Mr. Quintle?
Abstain.
And myself, yes, it is four in favor, zero opposed, one abstention. We have approved that license. That brings us into administrative notes. Wish of the board in regards to the seven listed administrative notes.
Unless my colleagues would like to pull out anything specifically, I will make a motion to approve as a group.
All right, Mr. Golden moves that we approve the seven listed admin notes as a group. Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Ms. Iaquinto seconds. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Kohan? Mr. Quintle?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is unanimous, we have approved the seven listed admin notes. That brings us into our agenda items. First listed item on the agenda is Pilgrim's 1600 acre area plan presentation. This being the final presentation, we are joined by Lee Hartman and the consultant Sasaki. Mr. Hartman?
Thank you, just a couple of quick words and we'll turn it over for their presentation. So we started this process in November, so getting close to a year ago. And Sasaki is here to make their final presentation to the town based on all the work we've done since November. Before we start, I wanted to just thank Holtech. Holtech really participated in this process. It was great to have them on the team. Also just really want to thank the town manager, Stephen Cole from the Economic Development Foundation, this board, because many of you members attended many of these meetings and participated, and the planning board, so for all of your leadership too. And I think most importantly for me, as I've done a number of these in my career, this has been the one that's had the greatest participation we've ever had. So thanks out to the community with the thousands of responses we had, not just hundreds, to the surveys, the attendance, the workshops we had. So again, I think we should as a community be very proud of that public participation and what this community did. So what we're here now to have is a final presentation based on all the comments of what we've heard from the community and Sasaki to tell us, based on what we heard, what are some of the most likely outcomes and things we should look at. What we'd like to have tonight is a vote from the board to accept this plan. And it's important to note, well, we're not asking the board, we wouldn't ask anybody to say we accept every aspect of the plan and we believe in everything in the plan, but it's really an acceptance on your behalf to recognize the work that was done and recognize what the community has said is most important as we move forward and hopefully look to do something on this property. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to our consulting team.
Certainly.
Thank you, Lee, and big thanks to the Select Board. Very excited to be back since our last presentation in May, be able to present an update on progress with the process since then. My name is Margaret Leander. I'm an urban planner and associate principal with Sasaki. Today I am joined by my colleagues Martin, Alan, and Elon, as well as John from Landwise Advisors. So you'll be hearing from all of us this evening. So we have a brief presentation, and then we hope to leave time for discussion and of course comments from all of you. We'll start with a brief recap of the process for those that have not been involved or just need a reminder. We'll get into an overview of the structure of our final report that we've been working on over the past few months and really the intent of that document that will live on. We'll then get into our sort of land use recommendations that really came out of the last phase of concepts, share an example land use plan, which will really be sort of one single sort of potential future scenario or future sort of vision for the site, and really walk that one through. And then really get into proposed actions, really what we see as some of the next steps, and would like to get feedback from all of you on sort of what that will take to really implement this plan. So just recapping our process, of course, just a reminder for the Pilgrim's 1600 acre area plan, we are of course focused on the site that really is in between Plymouth Town Center, Manomet, and of course adjacent to the Pilgrim Power Station. And as Lee mentioned, really for the past several months, we've been focused on developing a really comprehensive process and robust conversation with the community, with the town, and with several stakeholders to really think about a potential future for this site as we imagine what it could be and what it could contribute to the town of Plymouth. So we've had a very extensive project team. First want to acknowledge, of course, that this project has been funded by the EDA as well as Holtech International. Our consultant team has included our team from Sasaki focused on land use planning, Landwise Advisors really focused on market analysis, and VHB focused on infrastructure and energy planning. We've had organizational and management support, of course, from the Town Department of Planning and Development, the Plymouth Foundation, and Old Colony Planning Council. And of course staff guidance really from all of you, as well as the Plymouth Foundation. Just at a high level, you know, our process that Lee referenced, we've really started back in November with the first few months focused on really analyzing and understanding the site as it exists today, its existing constraints and opportunities. Moving into the second phase was really sort of the winter and spring months, we focused on developing land use concepts that we were able to take out to the broader community and really sort of understand the feasibility of some of these opportunities. And the past few months or this final phase, we've really been trying to document and synthesize all that we have heard from the community and from the guidance we've received from all of you around a potential future and land use recommendations. And really these are sort of land use recommendations that would serve as future decision-making tool really with this report for all of you when you think about the future of the site. I do want to acknowledge too that we recognize this process has been going on at the same time as your broader town-wide master plan. And of course the intent here is that our recommendations... And of course, the intent here is that our recommendations from this study will inform the broader town master plan, and we've been in close communication with that team. Again, as Lee mentioned, we feel very proud of the engagement that has come out of this process, both digital engagement, whether through survey responses, information on the website, or comments or feedback we've received there, as well as in-person engagement. We held two sort of public forums. First one, which received almost 175 participants, really focusing at the visioning scale at a high level. Second public forum, 128 participants when we got into some of the land use concepts and getting feedback and sort of preferences from the community on what they're looking for. So, throughout this process, we've really sort of had these four sort of larger planning objectives or sort of topic areas that we really feel align and will help the site address some of Plymouth and the town's sort of current needs, whether that's dealing with fiscal resilience, really making sure that the future of this site has a net positive fiscal impact for the town, thinking about the needs of jobs and housing, really thinking about the employment demand as well as issues of affordability and factoring that in, thinking about how this site can contribute to broader goals around growth management. And that, of course, is thinking about how the town of Plymouth can be intentional with development and also curb sprawl through this site. And then lastly, thinking about open space conservation and recognizing the priority that that is in many respects, whether ecologically, environmentally, socially, for the town. So, in terms of the final report, you know, this has been, a draft has been posted online. This is just a quick snapshot of what we've been working on. So, it's a pretty, we like to think digestible, sort of user-friendly summary of our process, our engagement process, what we heard, really the land use concepts and the land use recommendations that we are including, as well as the actions, these sort of next steps that we'll get into a little bit more today. This is sort of just a quick infographic summarizing really sort of the report's structure, starting off, of course, with our site analysis, the physical conditions, the market analysis, really what there is a demand for, and of course, synthesizing all of the community engagement findings that we had. And that would flow into the land use recommendations that we have heard based on our analysis as well from the community, and then flowing into actions and next steps to really implement these recommendations. Here, just a snapshot of the actual report, this outline, I won't go through it in detail right now. This really mirrors our, the structure of our presentation tonight, but you'll see we go from our analysis really into a summary of engagement, land use recommendations and actions with an appendix with all of the detailed analysis there if people are interested. So, I'll pass it to Martin.
Thank you. My name is Martin Zogren. I'm an urban design and planning principal at Sasaki, leading this team and working closely with Landwise Advisors. As Margaret mentioned, the three sort of pillars that really form the basis for this is an understanding of the site itself, all the input that we received from the community, and the market analysis, what things fiscally that we learned about the site through the work of Landwise Advisors. Some of the understanding of the site itself, of course, as we've shared with you previously, you know, really has to do with sort of the distinct nature of the site itself and the robust topography that we find there. The steep slopes on either side, sort of banking down from the hilltop and towards the waterfront really give the site its essential character. We put those into several categories in terms of those areas which were steeply sloped and those which were less steeply sloped, in terms of appropriateness for development or ease of development. So, the white areas on the left-hand side image are really those which are somewhat flatter and a little bit easier to develop. On the right hand of the side, of course, you wanted to acknowledge the existence of those wetlands and wetland buffers areas in which building would be prohibited. Secondarily, we also wanted to sort of really understand the intrinsic recreational value that the site holds today. We know that informally and formally, it's used very often, weekly by a team of enthusiastic mountain bikers and taking data from the Strava sort of trail map system, really looked at the overall sort of number of those highly utilized mountain biking areas as a core sort of asset that the site has. We also recognize the scenic value of the site, understanding that the hilltop is visible both from the town center and from points across the larger bay as well as then the vistas out to the water from the site itself. And felt that was something in terms of the scenic value of the site that's important to the overall community and something that's very highly valued. So, again, community input combined with site analysis, combined with our market analysis. What is feasible? What is the site telling us? What did the community say? Those sort of led us to identify these areas indicated in yellow really as those areas which we felt were suitable for development. There may be some wiggle room on the edges where people sort of move into some of the steeper sloped areas, but broadly, this really served as a basis for the land use planning moving forward in which we saw that 20% of the site, could be less, could be slightly more, was really suitable for different types of development. From there, we took our own sort of first step at establishing what could be a few scenarios for what the land uses might be. We looked at residential, we looked at light industrial, we looked at recreational and tourism or amenity sorts of uses, a little bit harder to see as they're very small on that map. In the upper left-hand corner of each, we looked at some of the flatter areas and thought it may be appropriate, we might think about residential in those areas. Towards the waterfront site itself at Holtech, what are the opportunities for adjacency with light industrial? And certainly along Powerhouse Road, what is the viability of that site either for light industrial or for residential? And then these were, again, created internally before we went out to the public to sort of ask their opinions about what they thought these might mean. So, in that public forum too, as Margaret mentioned, we actually had a game exercise that we did and we brought here to you as well, in which people were able to build their own land use scenarios and in live time, look at really sort of the fiscal impacts of some of those various land use scenarios. So, we allowed people to test, we took the results from that, and from there came up with an idea of some of the opportunities. It is not anyone's specific land use plan, but rather the most likely opportunities that we heard back from the public as well as combined with our own professional planning expertise. And so, those three areas, the Warren Cove, you know, we felt was really, you know, if there were to be housing on the site, that was sort of a very interesting issue, that that would be an area suitable, making sure that we're mindful of any traffic impacts on 3A, of course. On the waterfront site and conversations with the broader community, a feeling that light industrial would be compatible, of course, that's on the time horizon of the Holtech site itself. Powerhouse Road was really seen as one of the sort of potentials for economic generation on the site with the ability to put light industrial along an existing roadway there and also immediately adjacent to the high voltage transmission line. So, that was seen as long as it's not negatively impacting the community of Manomet immediately to the east as a potential land use scenario as well. So, the example land use plan, just for the sake of sort of understanding what could be, and again, what would be the potential economic impacts and fiscal impacts, so we put some numbers to what emerged as sort of a preferred land use plan. Again, this could change greatly. But here we see sort of a number of amenities across the site and a number of land uses from the 110 to 190 hotel rooms potentially on the western edge of the site, 110 to 210 housing units compatible with the densities that we see today and that were mentioned by the public as being favorable, a light industrial site adjacent to the Holtech site on the waterfront, thinking through extending that light industry along Powerhouse Road, looking at the possibilities of small pockets of community retail where one exists today in the middle of the site, of course. And then also, we'll hear in the end about our recommendations around wastewater treatment because that's a very important issue for thinking about any development that might occur here. So, John's going to help us out a little bit with thinking through what the fiscal impacts of some of those numbers might be.
Thanks, Martin. I'm John Tremontosi with Landwise Advisors. So, for each of the concepts that we tested, we wanted to take a look at the potential fiscal impacts to the town of pursuing that type of development in those individual locations. And so, we wanted to essentially test the potential revenues primarily from property taxes against the costs that would be necessary to both service the new folks who are, you know, living and working in those locations, as well as the potential costs of doing maintenance on the conservation areas. And so, we did that for each of the scenarios. So, you can see here in the green are sort of the positive zones, the red, the negative zones. But for this particular concept, what you can see is that there's a net positive revenue to the town of about $1.2 million annually for this particular scenario. And we did that for all of them. If you dig into the report, you can see all the various fiscal impact numbers that we tested. We also, we know that employment's important for the town and the residents of the town. And so, we wanted to do an estimate of how much employment might be located within these, in the individual zones. The bulk of it's both on the waterfront with a future energy user as well as along the new Powerhouse Road area with clean and light industrial type users who could locate here in the future. So, and then there's a smattering of hospitality, jobs, as well as retail and recreation conservation jobs scattered throughout the site. So, in total, we're estimating anywhere from 800 to 1600 net new jobs to be located within Pilgrim 1600 in the future as these pieces potentially come online. All right. I'm going to hand it over to Alan for the next piece.
Hello. I'm Alan Del Santro from Sasaki. So, another of the objectives that we wanted to explore early on in this project was how this site would contribute to a broader growth management strategy in the town. We're very interested to see in past planning work, this very strong notion of Plymouth as a series of village centers. We wanted to respect that and make sure that anything we were proposing on this site was not contributing to a advancement of sprawl or a kind of fragmentation of open space. So, you can see here quite clearly that any development we're proposing is kind of adjacent to existing developed areas rather than being a new island of development. We think that's a very important kind of growth management principle. And that allows the creation of a very contiguous central open space in the middle of this site that would be conserved and continue to be utilized, but now more formally as a recreational amenity for the town's community as well as potential tourists coming in from the region and the country at large. So, as part of that, we're kind of seeing opportunities to start formalizing this trail system, investing in destinations, overlooks, retail, and having a clarity about how all these trails connect, both to the surrounding community and to each other to kind of create a cohesive network. So, with that kind of vision for this site, there are going to be 15 actions that you'll see spelled out in the report. And we have a lot of detail about all of these actions in the report, but we're just going to run through these at a high level with you today and kind of get your feedback on them. So, these are the things that we think would need to be pursued by the town and the town's partners within the near to medium term in order to kind of realize the recommendations of this plan. So, the first is industry and innovation, the second is conservation and recreation, and the third is infrastructure and services. And we'll go through each of these 15 actions one by one. So, starting with industry and innovation, action 1.1 is rezone for innovative industries. So, as you all know from previous conversations we've had with you, the site as it's currently zoned is mostly rural residential and medium lot residential. The only industrial zoning is at the current site of the Pilgrim Power Station. So, in order to attract some of these innovative industrial tenants that we've been talking about, you would need to rezone some of that corridor along Powerhouse Road to be industrial. But we want to make sure that happens in a really intentional way, and it's not just open-ended industrial, but has some clarity as to the types of tenants that the community was interested in that you're trying to attract. So, you can write language that makes that a kind of thematic corridor. We have some suggestions there of a climate technology corridor or a blue-green innovation zone. And think about ways to write zoning language that enables and attracts cleaner light industries, innovative industries, and kind of excludes those maybe high-traffic, high-noise, high-pollution impact industries that you wouldn't want to see on this site. In order to attract some of those more innovative uses, zoning alone would not be enough, right? We've talked before about how this site, while has that advantage of proximity to the switchyard and the high voltage line, does also have many disadvantages in terms of its remoteness from major transit stations and major highways and its relative obscurity in terms of, you know, not a lot of visibility and not a lot of access to larger workforce sheds. So, thinking about ways to intentionally attract innovative industries to this site is going to be important to overcome those barriers. And the example we're showing here of Fort Devens Innovation District is a really great example. This was a partnership between state agencies and the local town to try to intentionally brand an innovation district, funnel federal and state incentives to attract new clients, new tenants to this area, and really start to build the momentum to get people to come here. Action 1.3 is identify future energy uses for the waterfront site. So, as we mentioned before, the high voltage 345 kilovolt capacity transmission line that's on this site is a really, really high-value and unique asset, as is the switchyard that is there today. That asset should continue to be leveraged as an investment that has at least, you know, decades and decades of useful life left on it. But how that investment is leveraged, we're not here to say, right? So, we think that there needs to be continued conversation with the community to determine what are the energy uses that are appropriate for this site and how can we best connect those energy uses to a larger innovative industrial zone that kind of creates this synergistic relationship between energy and industry. So, we're just showing some options here. Undersea cable interconnection points are something that has been studied for this specific site in the past. Small modular reactors are something that's been a topic of conversation with the community over the last few months, both people opposed and people in favor of small modular reactors. Utility-scale battery energy storage, that's a resilience technology that stores energy for long term. And then rooftop solar is something that could be integrated alongside any future buildings. Action 1.4 is looking at the possibility of negotiating new energy use permits and pilots as a way to secure some of the goals of the community. So, if a new energy use is identified for this site, take that opportunity to hire really expert counsel to represent the interests of the public and make sure that you negotiate a favorable, a fiscally favorable agreement for that energy use through both the permit and the future pilot payments. And so, that could mean that you negotiate a buffer zone around the energy use that is put into permanent conservation. So, you get some of that conservation land for free, so to speak. And that could also mean that some of the pilot payment is specifically earmarked for conservation maintenance. And then, as I mentioned before, the energy use is really the thing that could attract a lot of innovative industries to the site. It is a differentiator. And so, leveraging that to bring in those industries that are going to require reliable energy and a high volume of energy is a way to kind of leverage this economically. I'll pass it back to John.
Okay. So, I'll talk you through the action items for Section 2 Conservation and Recreation. So, 2.1 is establish a governance structure to manage and maintain conservation lands. So, the idea here is that in order for this to be successful, it's not going to be just the town pushing this forward, it's going to be the town working with various other entities and organizations to both acquire, manage, maintain the conservation lands moving forward. So, the thought is that someone like the Wildlands Trust, for example, could work with the town to put the land in conservation and hold that conservation easement and then have others like FATS and NEMBA, I see there are some members here from those organizations, help with maintenance of the trail system in the future moving forward. And we've shown an example that's coming together out in western Massachusetts, called the Purple Valley Trails in Williamstown. And it's a consortium like the one I just described where you had the college, Williams College, and the town essentially leading the charge on acquisition and controlling the land and then using nonprofits to put the land and manage it in conservation and then engaging the mountain biking community to, of course, design the trails, maintain the trails, et cetera. So, we think it's some similar type of structure that could be successful here. So we think it's some similar type of structure that could be successful here. 2.2, identify and secure financial resources for conservation. So obviously, the pilot payment, potential pilot payment that Alan just talked about would be super helpful, but in addition to that, it will be really important to pursue all potential funding streams, right, from not just the town side, but also state and federal funding, as well as funding from potential nonprofit partners, like some of the ones I just identified. In the appendix of this report, you'll find a pretty extensive list of some of the state and federal programs that are out there today and what they can be used for. So I encourage folks who are interested in this topic to sort through that and see what's out there. 2.3, leverage development agreements to secure permanent conservation. So the idea here is that it might be more incremental than some of the things I just described, but you could potentially leverage future development in some of the infill zones within the town to secure additional conservation lands within the site and the zone that we're referring to. And this could be done through zoning requirements, negotiated or planned development areas, and then transfer of development rights. I think you'll find a discussion of these in the report and interesting ideas about maybe finding additional ways to leverage future development in service of conservation. 2.4, acquire and renew Emerson Park. In the public meetings, we heard a lot of discussion and interest in sort of formalizing this park as part of the town. And so the idea is that while it's under a lease agreement today, it could be part of a future acquisition and really used as a neighborhood amenity and facility, not only for the folks living in Manomet, but for the town at large. And so this is, I think, one of the goals that the plan outlines. 2.5, invest in habitat restoration and trail improvements. So the idea here is that for this conservation land to be successful, not only do you have to acquire it, but you have to put some money into maintaining it, right, to making sure that you're handling things like erosion, you know, safety and conflict between the different trail users. And so in formalizing this trail network, there will be some additional spending to design and manage and maintain that system. But it's all in service of recreation and tourism, and what that does is create additional spending and economic value within the town. And so 2.6 is about establishing a network of recreation and ecotourism destinations. So not only for folks who live here, but actually drawing folks from the region to come to this trail system to both recreate and hopefully spend money through lodging and food and things of that nature. And so there is an additional sort of companion study that was performed on the actual economic impact of that activity. There's a very detailed study in the appendix that I would encourage everybody to look at in detail. And essentially, what it says is that under a formalized trail system, visitation could increase to as high as 144,000 visits a year, and that could translate into economic output anywhere from eight to 12 million dollars a year. And so that's real economic activity that could be generated and harnessed to the benefit of the town. So I encourage folks to look at that in more detail. Okay, I'm going to pass infrastructure over.
Yeah, last piece. So just a few more to get through, but of course, we know the ability to develop any sort of parcel of land is really reliant upon the infrastructure and services that get to that piece of land. And of course, the Pilgrim 1,600 site itself has certain challenges. So those really fall into four major groups, the first of which is supplying water to the site itself. And so the opportunity here, or 3.1, is acquire well sites and designate wellhead protection zones. So of course, that the areas around the wells themselves would have to be protected. We have to think about if there are future land uses on the site, which might increase sort of the demand for the water, we have to make sure that there is going to be a source and that there is a program in place, as mentioned in the text, that begins to sort of protect those areas where new wells potentially could be locating, making sure that that doesn't prohibit or prohibit development in the future, but actually helps to serve and secure that development. Secondarily, of course, there will be an impact if there is new development on the site to the road infrastructure. So invest in mobility improvements and designate future routes, specifically along 3A, likely necessary if major development proceeds, upgrades would be necessary, looking at each of the individual intersections. Think about the internal roadways, how those are financed for areas within the projects. And then also thinking about Powerhouse Road, and if that should be transferred to the public jurisdiction rather than that currently under whole text usage right now. So a couple of improvements which would need to be taken onboard along with any future development, specifically around any housing and/or, more importantly, the industrial uses potentially along Powerhouse Road. So improvements to that sort of road infrastructure secondarily. Third, of course, is knowing that we're quite a ways away from convenient wastewater treatment infrastructure. It's an expensive endeavor, whether that is to extend lines from Plymouth Town Center or Manomet in either direction. And it's an expensive endeavor also to think about how we begin to provide wastewater treatment on the site. So 3.3, identify and invest in wastewater treatment infrastructure. Those two miles are expensive two miles to invest in as we think about future land uses. Some of the opportunities certainly is the private onsite wastewater treatment plant, the extension of the municipal sewer system, and also sort of thinking through what it means to establish a new public sewer district. Lastly, we heard from many of you the sort of increase on services that exist, and so we would be looking for opportunities for a smaller substation for police and fire service as they're spread thin currently, and would need to have a central location for those with any new development. And then thinking also about sort of the time it takes currently for maritime public safety to get out of the harbor today, it's quite slow. And so there may be an opportunity on the waterfront site here for that public safety facility to have more immediate access to the waterfront. Those are all of the action items, as we see here, 15, which are detailed in more depth on the overall report. But we wanted to touch on these three big categories of our industry and innovation, that conservation and recreation, and then sort of the services, the sort of the functional components that get us there. And so all of those 15 are well detailed and are drawn from the observations and the community input for the overall process. That's the topic for discussion. We thank you for listening to the presentation. We thank you for being active members and participating along with us on this journey, which has been about a year, as well as thank you to Lee for providing the leadership and others with the city, as well as the fantastic community input that we received. And so open it up to any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Questions from board members? If no one else, I'll start. So what we saw up there was quite different in format and in some regards in content from what is the draft report that's in our packet. So I don't know when the draft report that we have in our packet was drafted, but it did make, following, having read through the draft and then seeing it up there is just a little different than I was expecting in terms of how it was presented. So I know that you had, I guess, on a more basic level, like I know that your, the analysis, because I went to the public forums and there were the different scenarios and there isn't, there was parts of it up there, and there's more of it in the draft that we have here, it looks like, about what those different scenarios would look like in terms of their fiscal impact. So you're just really providing, like if you did this, this would be the, an example of a fiscal, if you did this over here, but you're not recommending, you're just scenario planning, and then it's up to us to implement the scenarios that you're, or not, that you're proposing. Would that be a fair assessment?
Absolutely. That would be a fair assessment that we wanted to give, particularly tonight, to give you one example of a likely or one possibility scenario for the land use planning, knowing that this plan will not result in a specific, this is the plan and this is what you must go forward with, but rather a series of recommendations. But we did want to provide enough detail, both sort of, you know, spatially and then more importantly, fiscally, for one of the what-if scenarios. But the others are detailed, as we did go through those as well, both through the public meetings where we, you know, presented a number of options for what those likely fiscal impacts would be. But for tonight's presentation, we wanted to give you one example of what that might be.
So then, like, we wanted to conduct this process to be able to identify potential uses, cost-benefit analysis of those uses of the 1,530.35 acres we have right of first refusal on.
That's right.
And any of the other acreage that, you know, may come about, and what the town, to the extent the town's going to be involved in those discussions, what the town would do in those regards. So would it be fair to say that what we should do as a community going forward would be to have, continue to have discussions amongst ourselves in a forum, using your documents to inform, like, well, you know, this group wants to do X, but according to Sasaki, this is the cost-benefit of that, and the town can't really afford to do that, so maybe we do a little bit of X, a little bit of column A, a little bit of column B, you know, something like that. Is that, would that be a fair way to take this report going forward? Or how do you exactly envision our community taking your deliverable and getting from, we have a report, to making those concrete decisions as opposed to theoretical decisions?
Sure, that's a good point. I think broadly, one wants to recognize this as a snapshot in time, and it's a one-year process in which we did the market analysis based on financial situation today, which is always dynamic and which will continue to change to the future. Things may be very different five years from now than they are currently. So it is a snapshot in time, but it's our best effort collectively, and when I say "we," it's both the community and their input. We, you know, really made every honest effort to engage all of you, to engage the community, and get the sentiment for what those decisions could be on the site and what are some of the trade-offs incumbent upon any land use sort of decisions. So I think you have to take it as a worthwhile, important, and detailed, and fiscally responsible study, given all that we know today, the future is somewhat unknowable, and use that as a basis for that decision-making going forward, to take it from the theoretical to the more likely actionable steps, where we look at rezoning the site. That's a very sort of specific task that shall be undertaken by you and the community going forward. And to do that, you would build upon, well, what were the lessons learned in this report? What are the potential costs and benefits for changing that from that rural residential into something like a light industrial? I think we've explained as best as we could, knowing what industries are out there and with interviews with brokers and interviews with sort of the overall community, what the benefits are for something like that. And I think that we've tried to as best as possible really build consensus around something as sort of seemingly straightforward as an update to the zoning code to change that to light industrial. And we feel that there's probably enough support for that and that we've shown both economically and sort of benefit-wise, that would be a wise thing to do. But one of the very tangible actions would be start to think about the rezoning, you know, of the site itself, as you think about also the negotiations and your right of first refusal, which will begin to force your hand a little bit in terms of the timeframe of that, which is sooner rather than theoretical 10 years out. It's sooner than.
Right. But your report has these scenarios based on geographic zones within the parcel.
Absolutely.
As it's currently constituted. So one of the concerns of the community was of that 1,530.35 acres, we might have 500 acres to the southwest come online on the market first, and then we have to make a market analysis of, does the town want to spend the money it has on hand on that southwest 500, or do we want to hold out for the remaining 1,000 or so? So we could, your report using those scenarios would be useful for that analysis, correct?
It would be, yeah, sure. Sure. And especially if you're thinking of what are the different scenarios for different land uses that you could imagine. Or we've also, you know, tried as much as possible, what I think John did an excellent job explaining, if indeed there is this, you know, desire to sort of think sooner about the conservation, what are the mechanisms available to us? What are the examples, we've just seen it happen out in Western Mass, who's available to help us out, think through those specific steps of this conservation area? And so we tried to be as specific as we could to keep this from being overly theoretical and to say, you know, specific actions are X, Y, and Z to sort of move this in the direction that we heard from all of you.
And then using that to analyze the cost-benefit of, say, for using conservation as an example, if a portion of the property were to come online on the market in the near term, that had relatively low economic value regardless of how it was used, but had, you know, potential significant ecological or other environmental or sustainability value, that could be used to inform us in partnering with somebody like a Wildlands Trust or another entity and saying, you know, because obviously, if we get money from a group like that, I'm not saying this is bad, but there's going to be strings attached, and they're going to want to see that property used for a certain type of use as opposed to, if the town buys it with cash, we can do whatever we want, we can subdivide it however we want, things of that nature. So that would be fair to say as well?
Absolutely. I think in the, you know, John mentioned that there was a subsequent study of sort of the overall structure of what it means to be able to conserve lands and what is the value of those conserved lands. And so we've given you the amount of specificity to say, okay, for that 500 acres, if it were to become available, what are the pros and cons of having it by the city or having that in a larger trust? What do you relinquish in terms of control over that and liability for people coming onto the site? On the other hand, what do you gain from having the non-for-profits or other sectors help you financially with that site? So there's plenty of detail in there to help you along the way for those decision points which are imminent at some point.
Okay. And I know that, you know, part of the parcel, including part of the parcel that's in the right of first refusal, is still under their license, which is not anticipated to go into partial site release until at least 2035 under their current decommissioning timeframe. So that would also inform some of our decisions as to how, if it does come online in parts, how we would want to approach the acquisition or non-acquisition of certain parts in order to hold out for other parts.
I believe so. I think we tried to be as conservative as possible with those areas not subject to the right of first refusal, because that timeframe is long.
Yes.
A little bit unknowable. We don't know exactly the direction that's going. So we wanted to be, again, as conservative as possible with that site, because we didn't want to overly promise a waterfront-adjacent mixed-use community where that's very unlikely, at least in the 20 to 25-year timeframe. So better to be conservative right now with those sites as it's still in flux, and it's actually completely tied up with the overall negotiations for the land itself.
Right.
So that's where we've been the most conservative. We really went out and sort of got the agreement and an understanding that light industrial could be compatible on that site in that area and would be beneficial.
Right.
But again, sort of with a lot of sort of conservatism around that because of the timeline that we know going forward, and also the safety issues and the sort of the very specific decommissioning process itself.
Okay. And last several months, market volatility has been on the upswing? So when exactly was, you mentioned a snapshot in time, was there a specific time where, like, prices and market analysis was excised and used throughout, or?
I'll ask John to help me out with this one. Did you hit it on our market analysis?
Yeah, I mean, the market numbers were taken in the early part of the year window, so it would have been sort of like end of 2024 essentially is when we were looking at that data. But we think of it as sort of a five-year horizon. So a lot of the forecast, population growth, all these kind of things, it's kind of a five-year window.
Okay.
After that, the crystal ball on that stuff gets pretty blurry. But I would say, you know, nothing in here, I mean, there's nothing that we've done in here that says, hey, you know, in another 10 years, you can't do any of this, right?
Right.
Some things might shift, right? So the things that we're saying are industry today might be different industries in 10 years, but, you know, that site is still going to be suitable for some kind of industry or sort of, you know, workers. The areas that are suitable for housing today are still going to be suitable for housing in the future. So I don't think that the market cycles might impact timing, but I don't think it, you know, fully impacts, it doesn't change what the plan looks like.
So should we, let's say for sake of argument, we're looking at this five years from now, if we're putting it into an inflation calculator or comparing it to CPI numbers over time, should we use a snapshot like January 1st, 2025? Should we use another date for like?
I think that's fine. Yeah, I think January 1st is fine. That's a good, you know, round number, and it's in 2025, not 2024.
And it's easier to remember because it's the start of the year. So that's.
That's good, that makes sense.
Right, okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you go back to the slide that showed the red roads?
The red?
The roadways?
Oh, yeah.
Highlighted in red? That one, yep. I appreciate that the residential slash hotel area has a new connection going into it. I think the folks who live on, in the residential neighborhoods that have bought that will be grateful for that. It directs all traffic on to 3A, and much of 3A is a single lane road in and out. Is there any consideration for expanding the infrastructure, widening that road, for example?
Absolutely. So the first bullet point there, upgrades to Route 3A are likely necessary if major development proceeds on the Pilgrim 1600.
That's what you're talking, you're talking about widening that road?
Absolutely, yeah. It would, you know, in order to, again, if it's one lane in either direction, certainly you'd be looking at, you know, increasing that, what the numbers are. Again, that's pretty, you know, dependent upon the development, which is going to happen, the signalization on either end of that, the traffic flow, also emergency vehicle access, moving that through into the site itself.
I think Lee wants to add to that.
Just for, the difficult part about 3A is it's a state highway and under state jurisdiction, so it really kind of limits what we can do. But we're already talking about, based on this report, what can we go back to the EDA for, for federal funding to help bring us closer to some of these goals? And a good example, I think the one that comes to my mind, and we haven't really talked a lot about it, is extending the sewer line from JB's Corner out to Warren Avenue. Now, that's something that I think that they'll be willing to invest based on this study, and gets us a little closer, serves some other purposes for the town, but also gets us closer. Maybe it's road improvements on Powerhouse Road or other roads that we can deal with. But I think part of the outcome of this report is now to go back to the EDA and say, okay, here's the goal, the community says they have some willingness to have commercial development, industrial development here. If it provides for protecting the majority of the land, to get to that commercial development, here are the things we need, can you please help us fund it?
Yeah. Yeah, I hear what you're saying about it being a state road, Lee. I don't want that to be the end of the conversation, though, because we, the people who live in Mannamet are not going to accept any longer. This is a state road, we can't do anything for you.
Oh, no, yeah, but I think they would have to be the partners with us.
Sure, yeah, thank you.
Yes, and I think the people of Cedarville would also have some comments about the ease in working with the states to make improvements to 3A or the lack thereof. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Cohen?
During the public meetings, which many of us had the opportunity to participate, like Lee said, thousands of people responded to different aspects of the planning process. I was intrigued by the models that you had that showed the cost of services, where you move things around on the board, and it told you in real time. What is the longevity of that? Is that information available to the town as part of this process? We have access to such a model that the staff and the planning department could use in future discussions with different people in different options, as the chairman has indicated, you know? How are we going to respond to different acquisitions at different times to see what is the priority, what is not the priority? We have this five-year window that this information is fresh and then becomes stale. But I'm curious about that model you had, and I'm curious about the information that was being fed into the model to give us this result, if I move this into play for residential or I move it into light industrial, this is the net benefit, or this is the negative aspect. So if you could elaborate a little bit on that aspect of the planning process that we participated in, it was very interesting.
Sure. You know, broadly, I would say, for us, it came out of, as a planning and design firm, and we do projects all over the Northeast, we do projects all over the United States, we do projects globally. This was a great opportunity to, this was one of the first times we took that public, that sort of model. So we've just been developing this sort of, it's a pretty simple technology, but basically putting QR codes on the back of those model pieces and having it come up and then having the calculations being done. So for us, it was also, you know, a little bit of a test run to see how the community would react and if it was, you know, both sort of comprehensible, but also sort of immediately interesting. And I think, resoundingly, it was. And we really, you know, enjoyed putting it together, but we also felt that it really sort of engaged people. And so I think you're reflecting a little bit of that, sort of, wow, that tool's pretty useful, and I'm able to see live time how my land use decisions result in sort of fiscal modeling for the site. So awesome, great that it was a useful tool. Certainly, we have a, well, say, number one, as John just mentioned, you know, the financial data is going to be based on a certain point in time, so January 1, 2025 is, let's say, you know, a pin in when this, you know, financial, you know, costs and benefits were. Secondarily, though, it is a digital interface, in terms of, it would be possible to very easily create a web-based activity where you slide those pieces into place and you look at those benefits, based on all the data that we have right now. That's a pretty easy lift to sort of move those things around online. If you wanted to actually use that table and the actual puzzle pieces, we can figure out a way to make that possible, and whether, you know, one of us has to sort of carry it around with us. But, you know, we're happy that it resonated with you.
I guess it would be like merging the two. You roll something out, it was very interesting, you're hearing some of my fellow board members talk about the longevity of this planning process and how it can guide us in the near future and maybe after or post-five years. But having something like that, that we can interact with, that brings the information alive in real time, even after you leave?
Absolutely.
Obviously, the other thing is that the curiosity of how these models were constructed, you kind of outlined it, but maybe five years from now, we're coming back to you to ask for an update in that information. There's a, you know, rather than do the whole plan over, just update a component over the time, giving the plan longevity, because the chairman has indicated we're looking at a decommissioning process that's going to be, we know, more than five years. So we'd want to see if there's an opportunity to refresh it.
Yeah, I just want to say, that's something we've been doing with other towns as well. There are various dashboards we can do, where you can essentially, you know, drive it yourself, and where we sort of make clear which inputs are the critical ones that need to be updated. Things like property values are going to, you know, as property values change, increase, decrease, that's going to have a kind of an outsized impact on what you're seeing.
Have you ever done that in another town where you're updating the information on that component, or is it, this isn't so new that you haven't had a chance?
Yeah, I would say, yes, that's something we've been, people have been asking for more and more, whether it's sort of like it's an ongoing kind of almost a subscription-type tool that they can drive and can be continually updated. So yes, that's something we're seeing more of.
No, just trying to think of that, that it, you know, we played, you know, it's been, at great cost have we created this master plan, and seeing that tool and seeing the ability to update it and guide us beyond five years, possibly, that's something that you can hang your hat on as we have to make these decisions.
Yeah, I was just going to say, the data, where it comes from, you know, a lot of it's from the town, right, in terms of your various tax rates and things of that nature. There's a lot of market data about, you know, valuations of various real estate products, and then there's also a lot of assumptions built in based on just the experience of doing this. So it's kind of those three main buckets, I guess I would say, where the data comes from.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Ms. Iaquinto?
First of all, I just want to thank you very much. This was an incredibly thoughtful proposal that evolved from a very thoughtful process, so thank you for all of that. The infrastructure demands, the potential infrastructure demands kind of took my breath away, but I got past that. I was really surprised and interested to see that only 20% of the land is actually developable, and 80% of it is not because of the slopes. But it was a very creative use of that land for conservation purposes with a focus on mountain biking. So I'm looking at this now, okay, so this is the spot, this is the mountain bike area. And I was curious about the data that you used in your report on page 13. You have bike trip counts that seem to be like sort of at the heart of your proposal here for the way that land would be used. Where did those numbers come from?
We talked about that this morning, Strava.
It's Strava, it's an app that mountain bikers can use to track their rides. Not every biker going out is going to track their ride on Strava, but those who do provides a great data source for us. So it allowed us to see the density of rides that happen in certain areas, I'll go back to that. And so, that gave us a sense of what to prioritize in terms of conservation for that recreational use. There's, of course, mountain biking happening on the entire site, but these are the densest areas of mountain biking.
So that data actually came from people who were using Strada on that site?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
To track their rides on that, so it is coming from a legitimate data source.
Okay, thank you, that was all I have for now, thanks.
Other questions from board members? Mr. Quentin?
Basically, a comment. Nice job, useful information, and as the town goes forward, got some decisions to make. I also noticed on the infrastructure costs and the traffic, and there'll be a hard sell for me if I'm around on this board to develop even 10% of that land. For the reasons you've seen there on 3A, you mentioned Cedarville, good example, Mannamet. Let's talk about Long Pond Road. Soon to come and add to that list will be Court Street in North Plymouth. So I am going to be very hard-pressed with infrastructure improvements in any part of this community. I guess I've been sitting here too long. But I will say, I haven't seen one yet that works. If I had my way in my vote as of right now, it would be a SMR plant with the lines there and every other piece of that property put in conservation. And that would be settle the traffic, it would settle the town's financial woes that we have. We learned from the last plant that we had, we made mistakes, we learned from them. We also have another concern, which we didn't see, was future energy needs. You know, is it green power? Is it solar? I think it's pretty fair to say that, there was a lot of members in this audience when they were getting whacked with $700 and $800 electric bills. They had eased off a little, and they were very quick to point the finger at the governor, which I don't buy. It's not the single governor's issue, it's a state issue, and then it's a country issue. So as everything goes electric, and our new building codes, our stretch codes, that went into effect, I believe it was July, we need to, as a country, figure out how we're going to go green. I'm all for going green, but let's lay out a plan on how we get there and a safe way to get there. So, kudos to everything you see, but those red lines scare me, the state scares me. We all know that we can sit here and say all we want, but the bottom line at the end of the day from where I'm sitting, is they're not going to change anything as far as our community goes. We have decisions to make. Everybody on this board, or I've heard certain members say, we learn from our past. Let's say it again, let's learn from our past. Okay, you see red lines up there? They're huge. This town, and that part of town's not even built out yet, so they're not going to get any better. So if the state's telling you they're going to give you X amount of this federal funding, double it. Just remember those words, double it, because it's not going to work. So, as I sit here now, it was a great presentation, but considering everything up there and what I've seen happen to this town in the last 40 years, I say leave it alone. But that's not for me to say. I represent people, and the people determine what happens. Thank you. But a good job.
Yeah, thank you so much for those comments. And at the very outset of the project, I think you identified two of the biggest challenges, obviously, infrastructure to the site, whether it's freshwater, wastewater, getting there, the road infrastructure, very big challenges for the site. I think that in combination with what we all experience in the Northeast, which is increased and increasing power costs are in our future. And that is a dilemma that all of us in the Northeast are going to have to think about very hard in the upcoming years as things do electrify, and that's a big regional issue, absolutely. And this site is sort of at this really interesting nexus of the past and the future, what it was, what you learned from that, and what it will be going forward.
Thank you. Any other members of the board have any questions? Mr. Golden?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This question is actually for Lee. Are you folks looking for a motion to simply accept the report? Because there are multiple options.
I think it's to accept the report, but again, I think what we've been talking about here is what we've heard from the community, based on what we heard from the community, which is, from large part, we want to protect as much of this land as possible. And then the second part about that is, well, if we want to, what are the options we can do to leverage as best as possible to protect the most of it? So I think that's the underlying theme here of what the report is. We've really focused here on a lot of the nuts and bolts, but it was really about, what can we do if we have to partner with the owners now, Holtech, to offer them something in return for keeping as much of this as open space? So I think what, yes, what we'd like you to do is just accept the report, recognize that this comes from more the community than it does from Saseki, but again, these are options for what we can do moving forward. And again, I think whether we're talking to Holtech, a future property owner, maybe a future energy provider, or the community about funding or zoning changes, we can use this as our basis to say, hey, we met with the community, and here's some consensus, there's a willingness to pay money, there's a willingness to have some development, if that results in protecting the majority of this land. So yes, if we were inclined to, we'd love to have you vote to accept the report.
Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Iaquinto?
Just one quick follow-up, Lee. So will our vote essentially close out this project?
Yes, so we still have to work on getting the final report together, and now we have to talk about what we can do so that model is available to be used, whether it's web-based or if it's something we just have in our office. But yes, this is the conclusion of the project.
Okay, thank you.
Lee, in regards to the modeling, do we, we have the capacity within the budget for the project to?
We have to discuss that. Again, they have the model, and the model works with a QR code, so with code. So without building the frame and the box they have.
Right.
I think a simple reader for the QR code, and if we can get the model, we can make that work. Web-based is something we'll have to talk about.
They seemed to indicate that a web-based solution would not be very expensive or labor-intensive to create.
It is on my notes to talk about at our next coordination meeting.
It would be actually more versatile, too. You have greater availability.
Right, right, and you could access it from wherever you may be, and you could also bring it, you could bring a laptop to a meeting.
To a public meeting and have people on iPads.
Right. I think that the tactile experience is, there's a benefit to that, but having, and a web-based, you know, we could lose the model or it could get damaged, whereas the web-based one is more resilient. So I think having the options would be nice. So, just my two cents.
Absolutely.
Other questions? Yes?
To finish up on the model discussion, but also that, thinking down the road, five years from now, is there a way of updating this information so the model lives on for a period of time beyond the five years?
They'll be happy to come back for a small fee.
That's what I'm saying. I want to know if that, I want to know what that is.
The backend is very easy, which is, again, John mentioned, it's being pulled from data sources, and so plugging in the data is quite simple, but if the land areas change, we've got to make a new model.
Okay, got it, got it. So there is a possibility in the future of doing something like that, and obviously it would be associated with some other, you know, compensation.
Absolutely. We're happy it's generated as much discussion as it has, and it's been successful, and that you've seen the value. So that's a success on our part, that we're able to sort of represent sort of difficult concepts and land use planning and make it sort of fun and interesting for people.
Yes, thank you.
I just wanted to add something, if I could.
You may.
Just, I wanted to like frame a little bit, so there are multiple scenarios within here, but I think one way to think of this report is guardrails. So those multiple scenarios all still follow a very kind of limited pattern. There's a lot of constraints on what we're saying would be suitable for development. We've excluded about 80% of the site, based on what we've heard from the community, based on what we think is feasible market and technical parameters-wise. So I would see that as these pretty big guardrails have already been set, and then within those guardrails, you still have a lot of flexibility to adapt to whatever may come over the next five, 10, 15 years.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or a motion?
Motion to accept the report.
Mr. Golden makes a motion that we accept the report from Saseki. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I will second.
It has been seconded. Any discussion? If no one else, I will put in my two cents. And only, even though I have the privilege of being the chair of the select board at present, I am only still one member of the community. I do have concerns about housing development on the site. I think, as I said in, I believe it was at the presentation in May, I love my constituents, but I already have enough of them. And I think that that site, I'd like to see as much of it as possible in conservation, because I think it's a unique natural feature, that once it's, in particular, once that would be lost, that would be very tragic. I do think that along Powerhouse Road and maybe in the area in yellow up there, you could, or mustard, you could have some smart economic development, be that a data center, be that like earth sciences-type jobs. We've talked about people, like, things that have a relatively low impact in terms of traffic congestion and environmental impact, but do have a positive impact on taxes and also have a positive impact on the world, if it's doing something like earth science work, you know. So if they're, and it would also improve, as was outlined in your prior presentation and the general master plan process the town is concurrently doing. So many of our residents have to leave Plymouth to live in Plymouth. You know, they have to leave Plymouth for work. They can either work here or they can live here, but very few of them can do both, and that's not very sustainable for a community long-term. So bringing in more jobs that are good jobs, that our residents could have and see themselves and their families grow here, I think that would be nice. If we were going to have residential, mixed use would be what I would hope, but I'd like to see little to no residential on it. Obviously, again, I'm just one person, but that's my choice. And I would also say that, you know, there's been a lot of talk about SMRs or further nuclear reactors. To me, we need to get rid of the dry-cast storage before we even have a conversation about that, because we haven't cleaned up from the last party, and we shouldn't be starting, talking about hosting another one, unless and until we've done that at a minimum. So I, and that's a national solution, that's a national problem, but that's something that needs to be worked on. I have a lot of other questions and concerns about that as well, but that's a threshold matter for me. So those are my two cents at the end here. Anyone else for discussion? Mr. Golden?
I would agree with your comments on housing, Mr. Canty. I think that the folks who live in that area would probably agree, too. When we had the exercise where we moved around the pieces, I think I said that mixed-use development would be far more preferable than any straight residential. But I think that's in our hands for the future. This was an options presentation, and hopefully, if we're sitting here, we will push for those sorts of developments rather than straight residential.
Yes. Ms. Iquinto?
Yeah, I will also chime in on the idea of having no housing, if that's, you know, if we could get away with that on that site. I think that's what we've been saying and hearing all along. But I will say that I think that what you've proposed here with some sort of hotel or something in that area on Warren Ave, along with all of the conservation area and the activities that we could potentially have there, and then the innovation zone, which I think is really super interesting to think about. I think that what you've given us is probably the best possible vision for how we can use a very complicated land. So for that, I thank you, and I would, you know, I will vote to accept the report.
Mr. Quinto?
Thank you. To follow up with some of your comments on like a data center. Data centers have been looking at Plymouth properties before, and they will tell you, the results will tell you, we don't have the electricity to power those plants. So back to square one again, as I said, and I do agree with you, the mess does have to be cleaned up there, but they're doing these plants all over Europe. They're doing them now in the United States. So I suggest, before we throw anything out the window, that we actually look at everything and, you know, see where you go. Because I, like I said before, and I'm going to say it for the last time, as of this minute, I want no development on those 1,600 acres. Because with any kind of development comes traffic, infrastructure, and we just had a meeting earlier, a goal-setting session earlier, where we're trying to figure out how to maintain buildings. Memorial Hall is a good example. We need a school. We all talked about that. So there comes a point where we start taking the fluff out of the sky and do what we can afford. And Plymouth really doesn't, can't afford, or should look for, more ways to build wastewater treatment facilities and water treatment plants, because it's going to cost millions of dollars. And from what I saw there tonight, and it's a snapshot, you're going to have to do a lot of convincing for that all to work. I just, you know, when I say "you," I don't mean you personally.
Appreciate that.
The professionals. You know, so, but it's early in the game, and I just don't, it's going to be a hard sell for me to see anything built on that land that doesn't have to be built, to be, you know, tax-positive, revenue-positive, let's use that word. So if I see that, then maybe I'll change a little, but, you know, I don't see it. I'd rather see it be, get some more information on the plant. I agree with you, as far as the cleanup goes, I think that's a little over our head. That's water under the bridge from years past. But the new stuff, we need to look at. We have an obligation to look at it, not only for the residents of this community, but for the taxpayers. You know, we had different discussions tonight about how they're gonna, we're looking at how we can send them an extra tax bill when they remodel their houses or they add on a garage. So instead of waiting till the next tax cycle, one of the goals, or I think one of the goals, is to start sending out a tax book for that little portion. So if that tells you anything, that's why I'm making the case where, you know, a lot needs to go into investigation. We need money. We need a school. We're going to need an override. So you want the truth, there you have it. That's my thought.
Mr. Cohan?
So, again, this plan that we've come up with is a result of thousands of people in the town inputting. And Lee is indicating that in all the years that he has serviced our town when it comes to the planning process, and that's nearly 40, close to 38 years. So I'd have, my involvement only is much shorter than that, 20-something years. And in that process, I have been very impressed with this planning process in terms of the outreach that they've done, because as Mr. Quinto has indicated, you know, conservation on this land has a lot to do with the cost of services. And that's why that model is so impaling to me and intriguing to me, is for whatever decisions we do in the future, we're going to have to base it on information and facts, and that will help us, guide us in the right direction. Obviously, we don't know what technology holds down the road after decommissioning five, 10, 15, 20 years from now, what options that we'll have. But as long as we've gone through this process, and as long as we have tools left behind for us to revisit the information and hopefully have some periodically updating, that the planning process never really ends. It's just you plan, you implement, you plan, you implement. So hopefully, we'll take that example that you've given us and the impressive planning process that you've had us embark on, and hopefully we'll take some tools away from that. Because I do believe that in the end, we have a very unique opportunity here with literally 1,600 acres there on the Atlantic seaboard on Cape Cod Bay here in the town of Plymouth, and conservation should be a major component of its preservation. And just as I end my remarks, is there going to be any public comment on this, or...
Public comment is later in the agenda.
Okay.
Any other discussion from members of the board? All right, hearing and seeing none, I will call for the vote. This is whether or not to accept the 1,600 plan report. Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Ms. Iquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Cohan?
Yes.
Mr. Quinto?
Yes.
And myself, yes, is unanimous. Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, so in anticipation that there might be a mass exodus, we will take a
if they haven't beneficially involved in the matter. And clearly, in this request, I am not in any way requesting that I have the opportunity to appear before town meeting, which is my area under the position of moderator, nor have I ever done that. But in researching reasons as to why towns would grant this status, it mirrors what is in your policy. And that is, that by the board granting special municipal employee status, it can offer flexibility and allow the town to leverage the expertise of individuals who might otherwise be excluded. And it's a benefit, in my particular case, in addition to our firm representing parties that from time to time may need to come before your board or another board or committee for a license or permit. We also represent a number of nonprofits in a pro bono capacity. And it's helpful as we encourage support of nonprofits in the community. We are actively involved in representing Habitat for Humanity, and they do have involvement with the town. I also have, over the years, provided pro bono services to my church. And from time to time, they have a need to appear before the Historic District Commission or other committees. I believe that this designation is fairly innocuous insofar as it is fairly run-of-the-mill to come before a town board or committee to request approval on behalf of a client. And I would note that your policy, Part II under the policy guidelines, gives you the power to rescind a classification at any time. And therefore, if at any time a member or the board would feel that the designation or the classification is improper or being used improperly, you have the power to place it on an agenda and change that. And finally, I would note that on July 8, you did unanimously vote to approve all of the other applications submitted this year, including the Director of Assessing, Planning Board Members, Sports Clinic Directors, Summer Sports Clinic Directors, Seasonal National Resources Officers. And I would note that the Planning Board also includes an attorney and a surveyor. And I think that your vote was a proper vote. And I would say that my application is consistent with your action last month and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Triffoletti. Any questions from any members of the board? Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Triffoletti, thank you for being here tonight. Sorry it was a little later than anticipated. You note in your application that you will refrain from representing any member of a board or committee who might have a claim against that board or committee. Can you just reaffirm that verbally here tonight?
I would reaffirm that openly to this board. In having discussions following my last appearance last year with members of the select board who were sitting at that time, that was some of the feedback that I received. And quite frankly, in my entire 48 years as an attorney, I have not had the opportunity to do that for one time.
Thank you.
It's not a substantial part of our practice.
Thank you. And you mentioned moments ago that you acknowledge that we, by our own policy, are able to rescind a designation on a motion of any member of our board. Should you renege on your commitment to not represent board or committee members against their board or committees? Do you acknowledge that we will have that right?
Yes, and I would just say, in all my 37 years as a town official, I've never made a representation to any board or committee on which I've later, as you would use your word, reneged.
Thank you.
Other questions for the moderator? Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Triffoletti, for being here tonight and for your presentation. And I would agree that the position of town moderator does benefit from your expertise and your knowledge. So thank you for that. I'm just curious about the frequency of your need to use the special municipal employee designation. Like, how frequently would you appear before a board or a committee to represent one of your clients?
Well, it would be matters that are covered by our firm. Quite often, it might not be before a board or committee. For example, with respect to Habitat for Humanity, my law partner is very actively involved in that. And much of that is done in dealing with town officials. But in order to assure that there not be any concerns about my involvement, my firm's involvement, we thought that it would be appropriate to come before you. But often, it's not even before a board or committee. A few times each year, unless a client has issues where the board is asking them to come back, more than once.
So this, oh, sorry. This could be just a discussion with a town employee, that you're representing your client with a single town employee? So it wouldn't be something that might come before the select board or come before?
Yeah, and we're not looking to represent town employees. What we're looking to represent is private parties, like nonprofits.
Right.
Or another example might be, I'll just give a common example, a restaurant or a liquor store seeking a permit or a license.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Other questions? If no one else, I have a series of questions. So, Mr. Moderator, recent applications for special municipal employee, as you've outlined, had appeared before this board over the past few months, have been able to demonstrate how granting them an SME designation would benefit the town. So how would granting you a special municipal employee designation benefit the town of Plymouth?
I think what I said earlier in my presentation is that when a town grants special municipal employee designation, you offer flexibility and allow the town to leverage the expertise of individuals. This is certainly something that the town of Plymouth should want to encourage. And while, you know, we've grown quite a bit, we're not a city, so we're still relatively small, there's a pool of talent available with people who are surveyors, who are architects, who are accountants, who are attorneys, among others. And I think that pool of talent should be encouraged. It will benefit the town to have people in those professions participating and representing people in ways in which the presentations are done properly and in ways that might be in the town's best interests. And I would note that you had your reasons, for example, of approving the planning board. Presumably, it was because you, as a board, felt that it was beneficial to the town to leverage the expertise of the surveyor who serves on the planning board. You also have an attorney on the planning board, and I would say that your decision was a good decision, and my application is consistent with that decision.
I'm not sure I agree with that. But could you, specifically in regards to your position, not all special municipal employee designations, but how does it benefit the town to offer and designate the position of moderator as a special municipal employee designation?
I think it's no, I'm going to say it's no different than an elected planning board member. The moderator currently is an attorney, and there is certain expertise, skills, and experience that I have as an attorney that is beneficial to the town in other ways other than presiding at town meeting.
So if you were not given special municipal employee designation, would you not continue to serve as the moderator of the town of Plymouth?
No, I've not said that. What I have-
So in that instance, if I could, in that instance, what is the benefit? Because if you're going to serve, whether we give you the designation or not, doesn't that negate the benefit of designating you as a special municipal employee? Because you're going to serve regardless of whether you are designated as such?
I don't think that's really the issue. I think the issue is, will the town benefit if the moderator and people like me in elected office or in other office are able to serve and also appear before other boards and other committees? And I would propose that that is a benefit to the town.
So how is you, as the moderator, because you're the one with this application? The planning board is different, because the planning board member that applied was a land surveyor. So the land surveyor is not going to be advocating for clients of his in front of boards or committees in the community. Now, as you point out, and as I said in my opening, it applies to the position of planning board. So there is an attorney currently on the planning board. That attorney does not represent nonprofits in the community or represent restaurants or bars seeking liquor licenses or other such activities. I personally, if that attorney or some other attorney on the planning board that is not currently there but is subsequently elected were to start appearing before boards and committees, I would be the first to seek to rescind the designation of special municipal employee for that position, because I don't think that that is appropriate. I am curious how the town benefits, because the positions we've approved so far were primarily, with the exception of the planning board member, from like a school teacher that during the summer months wants to work for the recreation department. So the benefit of the town is, we get somebody that's already good with kids, that works with the town, that has the summer off and wants to keep working for us, and that fills a vacancy. So we get a benefit from them being a teacher, we get a benefit from them working at the recreation department. I am seeking from you, we benefit from, I agree that we benefit from you being the moderator. We benefit from your legal skills in the position of moderator. But you just ran for reelection and were voted for another three-year term in this past May, correct?
That is correct.
Despite being not given this designation in last year, correct?
That is correct.
So obviously, it didn't disincentivize you from continuing your role. And you've stated tonight that it won't disincentivize you from continuing that role in the future, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Kenty.
So how does the town benefit from you appearing in front of a board or committee for, say, a liquor license, as the moderator?
So, again, I understand your arguments, and respectfully, I think that you're framing them in a way that isn't necessarily consistent with the past practice of this board.
How so?
And with your policy that has stated in writing that the town can benefit from the expertise of certain professionals. Now, I disagree with your analysis regarding the applicant from the planning board, because the surveyor, in doing his work in order to have it come before the town or a board or committee, is no different than if I or a member of my firm is working with a town in order to try to accomplish something, whatever it might be, that requires the town involvement. And I would say to you that it is beneficial to have someone with expertise and experience. I can use my experience in being a lifelong member of my church. And when the church decided to do some substantial upgrades on improving the church and the exterior, it was necessary to be involved with the Historic District Commission. And certainly, as a lifelong member, as someone who has been a part of this community for many years, unlike maybe an attorney coming from outside the area, I understand the character of the town. I understand the concerns of people who might serve on the Historic District Commission, who might care about the history of the town and the beauty of the town. And so, for those reasons, when I come before the town representing a party, I have an understanding that, let's say, an attorney from outside of town wouldn't necessarily have. And I think that this is something that we should encourage, not only in the position of moderator, but really, we should be encouraging people of all walks of life to feel comfortable participating in the town, either as an elected official or as serving on a board or committee, and not hesitate to volunteer their time and services and not worry about whether or not it's going to adversely affect their work with their clients or customers, because they're now prohibited from practicing. And so I think it's a very good message for this board to be sending to the community at large in order to encourage people to volunteer and participate.
But again, it's not disincentivizing you, and we're talking about your application here. And we're talking, and particularly, I disagree vehemently with the idea that a land surveyor is similar to an attorney, because an attorney, it's not just what you know as an attorney, it's also who you know. If you, as an attorney, walk into a court that you go to routinely, you can get more done for a client at that courthouse on the same case than you can to a courthouse that you've never walked in before. Would you agree with that statement?
I'm going to say I disagree with you about it's who you know.
Really?
Because I would say, yeah, I would say that any of the people that you've designated may know people. But I also have a great respect for your board and for the other boards and committees in the town. And I believe that the people who are serving have the ability to go beyond who's coming before them to look at the facts and apply the law or an ordinance, if appropriate, and make the right decision, not just based on who's coming before them, but rather whether it's the best thing for the town of Plymouth. And all I'm saying is that it is in the town's interest to have people with the expertise and the knowledge and the experience to have the opportunity to be serving. And that's why we have this special municipal employee designation. That's why you have already voted unanimously for all of the other applicants that came before you. And I would say that my application is no different than the others that you've already approved.
I would say that your application is fundamentally different from the other applications, because none of the other applicants were an attorney seeking to represent people in front of municipal boards and committees. And that you are unable, as you stand before us, as you stand before another board or committee representing a client, you are unable to be anything other than the moderator first and whatever you else are, second. If I walk into a meeting in this community, whether it's Precinct 17, where I was last night, whether it's the Open Space Committee, whether it's I go to a planning board meeting and sit in the audience, I am intrinsically, as it stands right now, the Chair of the Select Board. I cannot take my Chair of the Select Board hat off and pretend to just be a regular citizen. I can't stand up at that podium and give public comment and pretend to be a regular citizen or advocate for something in my neighborhood and not act like me being Chair of the Select Board isn't having some impact on the people that I'm talking to and appearing before. I think it is intrinsic and it is an immutable characteristic for as long as you hold the position of moderator, that you are the moderator and that that would have an influence on the outcome of the representation and of the effort that you're putting forward. And there are 351 municipalities in this Commonwealth. And you are licensed to practice in the Commonwealth. You can practice in 350 of them without this designation. And I don't understand why you need to be the moderator in Plymouth and represent people in front of boards and committees in Plymouth as an attorney. I just don't understand.
So, Mr. Kenty, I probably should stop and just end this colloquy with you, because we clearly disagree. But I do want to respond to your last comment. And that is, that again, respectfully, I disagree about how I see people when they come before me. When I'm standing as moderator, I don't necessarily see you, if you want to get up and speak, as Chair of the Select Board. I don't call on you just because you're Chair of the Select Board. I have, over the years, demonstrated that just because someone is a member of the Select Board doesn't mean I'm going to automatically call on them because of their title. I often give preference to town meeting members. And I believe the same is true for the members of this board and of other boards and committees. If I come before them as Attorney Triffoletti, I am not being received as the moderator. I'm being received as an attorney for a party. And it is my experience and skills as an attorney and not as a parliamentarian and not as the moderator that is the reason why I'm there and making arguments. I'm not making parliamentary arguments about town meeting time. I'm there to talk about- I understand the concerns of people who might serve on the Historic District Commission, who might care about the history of the town and the beauty of the town. And so, for those reasons, when I come before the town representing a party, I have an understanding that, let's say, an attorney from outside of town wouldn't necessarily have. And I think that this is something that we should encourage, not only in the position of moderator, but really, we should be encouraging people of all walks of life to feel comfortable participating in the town, either as an elected official or as serving on a board or committee, and not hesitate to volunteer their time and services and not worry about whether or not it's going to adversely affect their work with their clients or customers, because they're now prohibited from practicing. And so, I think it's a very good message for this board to be sending to the community at large, in order to encourage people to volunteer and participate.
But again, it's not disincentivizing you, and we're talking about your application here. And particularly, I disagree vehemently with the idea that a land surveyor is similar to an attorney, because an attorney, it's not just what you know as an attorney, it's also who you know. If you, as an attorney, walk into a court that you go to routinely, you can get more done for a client at that courthouse on the same case than you can to a courthouse that you've never walked in before. Would you agree with that statement?
I'm going to say I disagree with you about it's who you know.
Really?
Because I would say that any of the people that you've designated may know people. But I also have a great respect for your board and for the other boards and committees in the town. And I believe that the people who are serving have the ability to go beyond who's coming before them, to look at the facts and apply the law or an ordinance, if appropriate, and make the right decision, not just based on who's coming before them, but rather whether it's the best thing for the town of Plymouth. And all I'm saying is that it is in the town's interest to have people with the expertise and the knowledge and the experience to have the opportunity to be serving. And that's why we have this special municipal employee designation. That's why you have already voted unanimously for all of the other applicants that came before you. And I would say that my application is no different than the others that you've already approved.
I would say that your application is fundamentally different from the other applications, because none of the other applicants were an attorney seeking to represent people in front of municipal boards and committees. And that you are unable, as you stand before us, as you stand before another board or committee representing a client, you are unable to be anything other than the moderator first and whatever you else are second. If I walk into a meeting in this community, whether it's Precinct 17 where I was last night, whether it's the open space committee, whether it's I go to a planning board meeting and sit in the audience, I am intrinsically, as it stands right now, the chair of the select board. I cannot take my chair of the select board hat off and pretend to just be a regular citizen. I can't stand up at that podium and give public comment and pretend to be a regular citizen or advocate for something in my neighborhood and not act like me being chair of the select board isn't having some impact on the people that I'm talking to and appearing before. I think it is intrinsic and it is an immutable characteristic, for as long as you hold the position of moderator, that you are the moderator, and that that would have an influence on the outcome of the representation and of the effort that you're putting forward. And there are 351 municipalities in this Commonwealth, and you are licensed to practice in the Commonwealth. You can practice in 350 of them without this designation. And I don't understand why you need to be the moderator in Plymouth and represent people in front of boards and committees in Plymouth as an attorney. I just don't understand.
So, Mr. Canty, I probably should stop and just end this colloquy with you, because we clearly disagree. But I do want to respond to your last comment, and that is, that again, respectfully, I disagree about how I see people when they come before me. When I'm standing as moderator, I don't necessarily see you, if you want to get up and speak, as chair of the select board. I don't call on you just because you're chair of the select board. I have, over the years, demonstrated that just because someone is a member of the select board doesn't mean I'm going to automatically call on them because of their title. I often give preference to town meeting members, and I believe the same is true for the members of this board and of other boards and committees. If I come before them as Attorney Trefletti, I am not being received as the moderator. I'm being received as an attorney for a party, and it is my experience and skills as an attorney and not as a parliamentarian and not as the moderator that is the reason why I'm there and making arguments. I'm not making parliamentary arguments about town meeting time. I'm there to talk about the specific issue before that board or committee and nothing else. And that is my role as an attorney. I identify myself as an attorney. I've been in many forums over my career, and sometimes we win and sometimes we lose, and it's based on the facts, it's based on the law, and it's based on experience.
So I have two things in regards to that. So first and foremost, when you call on me at town meeting, if I haven't spoken before, you actually do call on me because of my position, because as an officer of the town, I have all of the rights and privileges of a town meeting member except the ability to vote at a town meeting. Whereas a resident does not have that same privilege. So I would say that that is a factor.
And you're right, just like a town meeting member, you are like one of them.
Yes, I just cannot vote. However, in regards to the other aspect, I find that it is not... How many of your clients have hired you on the basis, would you say, on the basis that you are the moderator in Plymouth?
I'm not aware that any have hired me on that basis.
So you don't think it has factored into their analysis?
No, I think in many cases, we have longstanding clients we've represented for many years on many things other than town meeting business or town business. But if it turns out that a client is in need of that, they'd rather not go to some other lawyer if they've had us for many years representing them in other matters.
And is this, is appearing before Plymouth boards and committees and other town entities a substantial portion of your practice?
No.
Any other questions from other board members? All right. Hearing and seeing none, I will call for a motion. Do I have a motion in regards to the application to designate the moderator as a special municipal employee?
Motion to approve the position of moderator for special municipal employee designation.
Okay. Mr. Golden has moved. Do I have a second?
I second.
Ms. Iaquinto has seconded. Any discussion from members of the board? If no one else, I have a discussion. So I think that this application is fundamentally different from the other ones that we've received. I can say that it is very different as a lawyer. It is very much who you know, in addition to what you know, in order of how you get things done for your clients. If I am appearing with the same client, with the same facts, same background, same record in a court that I've been in front of many times, I can get them a different outcome than I can if I go to Orange District Court where I've never been. Because the people at the courthouses that I work out of know me, I have a reputation there, and a big part of who you are as a lawyer in your practice is your reputation. You can get more as you build up a positive reputation. If you get a negative reputation, you have a harder time. So it can work with you or it can work against you. But part of that factor of that reputation is who you are. And in this community, it is impossible for the moderator or for any other elected official, particularly a town-wide elected official, to just decide one day or for one instance that they're here as something else at a town board or committee. If I, as I said earlier, if I go anywhere to a town board or committee or even to a town-related 501(c)(3) or something, I am seen as chair of the select board first, Kevin Canty, citizen, distant second. And the moderator, in my opinion, last year and this year, is trying to make private profit off of a public position in a way that I think is inappropriate. And if we were to allow that to happen, contrary to what the moderator is saying about encouraging people to come out, what you're doing is saying you can leverage your position with the community to make money in your private enterprise, whether that be a law practice or something else, in a way that there is not a benefit. The planning board member that applied is a land surveyor, that they are measuring the meets and bounds of properties and reporting on basic factual information, not engaging in advocacy, not engaging in trying to convince a specific outcome based on their reputation. I think that is a fundamental difference. The other applicants that we approved were looking to do, as I said, work for one department at one part of the year and another department in another part of the year, and that's why they needed SMA. This is fundamentally different. And I think the message that this approval would send is not the message that this board wants to send, that you can profit off your public position. I was shocked, after a vote last year was five to zero with no abstentions, not to approve a special municipal employee designation for the moderator, that the moderator would apply again. Because I thought the message that we sent at that time by that board was that Plymouth was not the kind of town that wanted that sort of activity to happen, and that we believed that if you wanted to volunteer for your community, we were happy to have you, but we didn't want you to be able to profit from that volunteering. I have a lot of respect for the moderator personally. I would consider the moderator to be a friend of mine, and I think he does a good job as the moderator of the community. But I very much strongly disagree with the message that allowing something like this to occur sends. I would encourage members of this board to vote against giving this designation, because I think this is opening the floodgates to things that we do not want, and that if people... We are not so desperate for help in this community, that we need people that want to profit off their position to fill seats on our boards and committees. Those are my thoughts and my opinions. Other discussion from members of the board? Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I disagree with your assessment of the situation. I agree with the moderator's position that the member of the planning board who serves as a land surveyor in his full-time job, he is acting as an agent towards the community. He's putting his stamp on a plan, a plan that's going to go in front of the board that he sits on. And I don't have a problem with that, because he brings expertise to the position that I think is beneficial to that group. He obviously doesn't take votes when that sort of thing happens, so there's less of a conflict in that situation. You've acknowledged yourself, Mr. Canty, that there's a benefit to Mr. Trefletti's legal expertise. Ms. Iaquinto did as well. I agree with that assessment. I think that the moderator is often faced with complex questions of legality on town meeting floor, and needs to make snap decisions, even with the presence of our legal counsel at town meeting. I think Mr. Trefletti, being a lawyer himself, brings a level of professionalism and knowledge to the town meeting experience that is immensely beneficial to that group. I think there's a volunteerism element to this. I think there's a community benefit. I think there's a governmental benefit. But most of all, I think that the voters of Plymouth have elected Mr. Trefletti for over three decades to this position, knowing that he's an attorney in town, and I trust the voters of Plymouth. So I will vote yes.
Any other discussion from any other members? Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes, and I agree with Mr. Golden's assessment. I see it a little bit differently than the chairman does as well. I think that Mr. Trefletti has proved his integrity time and time again, as he continues to be reelected to his role as moderator. And I do believe that it's possible to separate the hats that you wear. You can wear your moderator hat at town meeting a couple of times a year, and then you wear your lawyer hat for the rest of the year. I think that that's possible, and I think that it's possible for the boards and committees that you appear before to see you in those very different roles and to understand that you're not there to strong-arm them into making any decisions. I also don't see this as a motivation to profit from the town. I do see it, as Mr. Golden said, as a way to, you're serving the community in a way by representing not-for-profits, as well as you mentioned the church and some other clients that you have. It also doesn't seem like this is going to be a daily occurrence that's going to drive your business model, so I too would vote to approve that.
Further discussion from board members? Mr. Kohan?
As the hour gets close to 10, I don't want to belabor. It was interesting to listen to the different components of the position by the moderator and the chair of the select board. But I do believe that, yes, they might have been a vote in the past, but there's precedent that I have to look at as a new board on the select board. These votes that were taken, where we were taking into consideration members of the planning board and their activities in our community, I think there's that that guides me. Also, which guides me is that there is some policing elements here, and that is the general population not voting for someone who they feel is not, you know, living up to the commitment that they're sworn to as an elected official in that capacity. And there's also the policing element of this board always having the power to rescind this privilege if we feel as if it's not being addressed properly. We do have over 40 years of experience in front of us as it relates to this, and we can look back at those examples of who's he representing at one point in time and what is his responsibilities as a moderator. So I feel comfortable just supporting the comments that have been made by fellow board members.
Other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for the vote. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Kohan?
Yes.
Mr. Quintle?
Yes.
And myself? No. In a vote of four to one with no abstentions, we have granted the moderator position, the designation of special municipal employee.
Thank you very much.
That brings us into public comment. Do we have any members of the public that are physically in attendance that wish to give public comment? Yes, go ahead. You can take the podium, identify yourself.
And thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Bill Bowles. I am the Director of Outreach for the New England Mountain Bike Association, and I'd like to address part of the presentation earlier that deals with conservation and recreation. The first point that I'd like to make, I'll make four, I'll try to be brief. The presentation suggested that the Pine Hills was laced with mountain bike trails. True, they are very popular with mountain bikers, but the Strava app only tracks bikes. I want to point out that these are not mountain bike trails, they are community trails. They're used by hikers, dog walkers, equestrians, trail runners, everyone. The New England Mountain Bike Association would volunteer to do trail work if it were needed, but again, we would not be doing trail work to benefit mountain bikers, we would be doing trail work to benefit everyone. Should this plan go forward, the people that will benefit the most are not outsiders. They're town residents, the people who are on the trails every day now. And further, not only benefiting the people that are on the trails today, but looking ahead into the future, as some of the speakers in the presentation said, 10, 15, 20 years, they'll benefit the people who are there today's kids and grandkids. This is a tremendous opportunity for the town to, if I can use the expression, land bank up to 1,600 acres. I don't see in this century or any time in the future, anywhere in the state, an opportunity like this. And thank you. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to attempt to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public?
Good evening, Mark Withington, Precinct 15. I know it is late, and so I've written down some comments to keep them short. What I'd like to do is perhaps provide some connective tissue between a lot of the things that I've heard the board speak of in terms of the presentation that Mr. Bowles just referred to that we saw earlier tonight, that being the preservation of open space, the desire to diversify our tax rolls, the desire to really leverage this asset that we have in this town of 1,600 acres. Before I do that, I do want to give a shout-out to staff, in particular Lee Hartman, who had the foresight to really focus on this piece of property. I think it's apparent that all realize the importance of this piece of property to the town of Plymouth, also to Stephen Cole, who had the curiosity as well, the tenacity to challenge the consultants to dig deeper. John, I'm afraid I've forgotten John's last name, with Landwise, referred to an appendix where the consultants looked deeper into this particular piece of property to study the economic activity that the property could benefit to the town, beyond just what we've seen, which is the tax revenue. So Stephen was critical in getting the consultants to look at that. And then finally, the consultants, I thought they did a great job. I work in the consulting biz myself, and I was one of the stakeholders that they interviewed, and I thought their collaborative approach and their methodology was innovative. So a big shout-out to all those folks. I do want to kind of focus, let me just read my notes so that I stay on track. I think we all recognize that their estimates don't have two decimal points of accuracy, no consulting study does, and I don't think they tried to allude it, they did, but they are absolutely directionally correct on the opportunity for the town. The 1,600 acres of open space boasting 75-plus miles of trails, as Bill spoke of, those are not just mountain biking trails, those are hiking trails, those are fire roads, those are equestrian. A long estate highway represents an unparalleled opportunity to stimulate our local economy and attract high-value employees to diversify our tax base, rather than developing more open space or upgrading municipal services or anything that any other town could do across the state or across this country to attract innovative businesses. We have something that is special, unique to this community. By prioritizing open space preservation and a balanced approach that champions ecological integrity, promotes lasting economic prosperity and enhances social well-being, Plymouth can transform this area into a premier destination for outdoor recreation.
Mr. Withington, you have exceeded your three minutes.
Oh.
I can give you another minute to conclude your remarks, or you could request an affirmative vote for additional time.
Can I request additional time? It probably will take me maybe two, three minutes more.
You have to request a specific amount.
Three minutes more, please.
Okay. So do I have a motion to extend Mr. Withington's time?
Motion to extend.
All right. Mr. Quintle has moved to extend by three minutes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Iaquinto has seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Golden?
Is there anyone physically in attendance who wishes to register a comment? Is there anyone online, Jade, who wants to comment? Great, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for the vote as to whether to extend by three minutes. Mr. Golden?
No.
Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Kohan?
Yes.
Mr. Quintle?
Yes.
And myself, yes. You may proceed.
Thanks so much. Plymouth can transform this area into a premier destination for outdoor recreation and a magnet for a skilled workforce. No other town or city on the entire East Coast, south of Maine, has this much elevation, this much open space, this close to the water. Across the nation's community, like Boulder, Colorado, Bendore-
Across the nation's community like Boulder, Colorado, Bend, Oregon, and Chattanooga, Tennessee have demonstrated how robust outdoor amenities from extensive trail networks, from mountain biking and hiking to vibrant green spaces are key drivers to economic growth. These areas attract adventure tourists and wellness seekers, generating significant revenue for local businesses, which is what our consultants showed, showed us tonight. More importantly, access to quality outdoor recreation is now a critical factor for high-paying employers in sectors like tech and biotech, who understand that a healthy, active lifestyle directly impacts employee recruitment, retention, overall productivity. In fact, according to the office, the Economic Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs and the Massachusetts Outdoor Recreation Office, a recent report from Business Facilities, a leading resource for business site selection, has ranked Massachusetts as the fastest-growing outdoor recreation economy. Governor Healy, quoting Governor Healy, "Massachusetts is at the forefront of harnessing the power of outdoor recreation to grow our economy and create good jobs." Over the past several years, the Pine Hills area trail system has been promoting this idea to elected and appointed officials such as yourself and the planning board and school department, along with civic groups like Rotary and BID Plymouth, all receiving its support. We have distributed thousands of these bumper stickers through more than two dozen local businesses and held numerous events at local breweries like Indie Firm and Second Wind. We have 200 members on our newsletter hosted at our website, fats.info. Over 1,000 followers on our social media and nearly 3,000 signatures on our online petition. Netting it out, this is a parade that Plymouth needs to get up in front of. By strategically developing this asset for trail-running events, mountain biking competition, equestrian tourism, and natural-based wellness routines, Plymouth can establish itself as a leader in the outdoor recreation economy. This approach will not only create jobs and diversify our economy base, but will also enhance the quality of life for all of our residents. I appreciate the extension of time. Thank you again. Happy to answer any questions if you have.
Thank you, Mr. Withington. Any other members of the public wishing to give public comment? Yes, Mr. Zuckerman, please take the podium and identify yourself for the public.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak on behalf of affordable housing. Specifically, I would like to present a new type of affordable housing for young and working families of Plymouth, of which we have shortage. And that is, uh, used to be called, uh, triple deckers that were built between the 1870s to 1930s. But, um, at that time, they were solution for truly affordable housing. And there is a movement in Massachusetts to, uh, to restore this type of a truly affordable housing, which I participated in. Mr. Canty encouraged me to, um, uh, appeal to the planning board with this idea. I would be happy to do that, but I also would like to, uh, present it to this board because this board is in charge of adopting policy directives and guidelines in principle and enacting rules and regulations to implement this, its policies. So I'm asking you to, uh, schedule my presentation, PowerPoint presentation here.
Does that conclude your remarks?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other members of the public in physical attendance wish to give public comment? Okay. And last check, anyone online? All right. That brings us to Town Managers Report. Mr. Brindisi?
All right, great, thank you. I know it's getting late, so I'll just highlight five items for the board this evening. So first and foremost, I just want the board to be aware that last night at the ZBA meeting, the ZBA approved a new BMW dealership that will be located at Colony Place. They received conditional approval. This will be a 250-car dealership. And so I would expect in the next few months, we'll see some, some groundbreaking to take In addition to that, I just want the board to be aware that the property owner of Burt's did file an application to our building department for demolition of the existing structure sitting on the Burt's property. So we have a named contractor, we're still waiting for the plans to be submitted so that it can be reviewed and approved. So at this time, we don't, we do not have a date for demolition, however, I will keep the board apprised as to when that day comes. And then I want the, the community to be aware that, um, the town clerk continues to push the inactive voter cards. Right now, we've only received 22% of the inactive voters returning their cards, so that's approximately 4,700 total. Uh, so we have a ways to go. We really want folks to take that serious so that we can get them active once again on our voter registration. So if folks could, please pay attention to that. The reason they are on the inactive list is because these individuals never return their census forms. And so just two more updates. We, the select, the Director of Planning, Lee Hartman, went ahead and updated the, um, the subsidized housing inventory, which is located on the town website. So this was something that was created, I want to say about four months ago, by, um, Community Development. So we now have a list of all of the projects in which we take credit for affordable housing units. This is listed on the town website. Uh, so given the most recent Avalon approval by the ZBA, which includes over 300 units, we are now at 8.4%. So as we mentioned before, the Pulte project, which is approximately 163 units, 41 of those units will be counted towards affordable housing. Those are not included in the 8.4%. Uh, so once that project is approved by the ZBA, we will go ahead and update. That being said, we have submitted for safe harbor, so we, uh, in theory have two years of protection against future 40B projects. Um, so just waiting to get confirmation from the state on that one as well. And then last, just because it's ahead of us, in the next couple of days, we will experience some effects from the hurricane that's coming up to the eastern seaboard. Uh, working very closely with our fire chief and Director of Emergency Management, we'll stay on top of this. Right now, we're not expecting any real negative effects from the hurricane, but if things were to change, turn more towards the west, towards the coast, we will be prepared to respond appropriately. Pending any questions, that's all I have for this evening.
Any questions for the town manager from members of the board? Okay. Hearing and seeing none. So the next item on our agenda would be select board discussion, but we still have an executive to go to, so unless there is an objection, I would solicit a motion to enter into the executive without going to select board discussion?
So moved.
All right. Mr. Golden has moved that we skip select board discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion about skipping discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Kohan?
Yes.
Mr. Quintle?
Yes.
And myself, yes. I will now read the relevant executive language. So we had listed on our agenda two executive sessions, but the first one, the opioid litigation item, is not going to be conducted. So instead, I will only read the second one. The select board will hold an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Clause 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. This is in regards to the Symes House. Do I have a motion to enter into executive session on this topic?
Uh, motion to enter executive session on this topic and not to return to open session.
Yes, we will not be returning. Thank you, Mr. Golden.
You're welcome.
Then as a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Iaquinto has seconded Mr. Golden's motion. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Kohan?
Yes.
Mr. Quintle?
No.
And myself, yes. In a vote of four to one with no abstentions, we are going to enter into executive session at this time. We will not be returning. Thank you.